We're about to get started. I've asked David Barber if he'll lead us in a word of prayer.
Right standing for a place.
First prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day today and many blessings. Father, I just thank you for being here this morning. To be a part of this meeting. Father, I just ask that you be with these commissioners as they make important decisions. You for Vansack County. Father, as we have concluded, another election day in our country, I just ask that you be with those who have been elected. That you be with them as they enter their terms of office. Just to help them keep you as forefront of any decisions that they make in the future terms. Father, I just also want to thank you for those who have served and will be leaving office in here. This morning especially, want to thank you for the service of Judge Patrick, Commissioner West, Judge Plaster. Father, just ask that you be with them and their families as they enter the next chapter of their lives and follow the end of their term of office. Father, I just ask that you watch over us as we travel to our next destinations following this meeting this morning. And Father also ask that you forgive us of our sins. All this we pray in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of that excellent flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Father. One nation under God, one and indivisible.
And David, we thank you for everything you've done. I tell you, you're always faithful here. All the reporting is always, in my opinion, been fired. Some of it I didn't like to see, but it was all fair, good, and thank you for your service for Vansack County. You've got, we all appreciate. They called a order, the regular session of Vansack County Commissioners Court on Wednesday, November the ninth, twenty twenty-two, at nine oh two AM. Announced forum is established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with a reading of the minutes of the meetings of the Commissioners Court approval, same for October the twelfth, twenty twenty-two, and October the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second, second by Commissioner West. Any questions, discussion, or corrections of the minutes? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion about the bills that have been submitted for payment? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills for, that's been submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, got a second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion about the bills that's been submitted for ratification? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number five, general announcements. Is there any announcements? I would announce we do have our, our state representative here. Brian Slaton, good to have you, sir. Is there any announcements?
Judge, I have one.
Okay.
I want to remind everybody that the Vansack County Veterans Memorial Event will be held on Veterans Day, which is the eleventh, at eleven AM in the morning. So we invite everybody to come and participate in the event.
Always a good event. Sure is.
This year, the, the master of ceremony is going to be Commissioner Tim West.
Any other announcements?
Well, we're done with the elections.
Are you sure?
Well, there's a lot going on behind. We're done.
Mr. Brian, did you want to make an announcement or presentation? Okay.
Thank you all for having me and what I have, and I'll have to put these to you after today because it's a resolution from the state of Texas from Senator Hall and myself. And just logistics, me and him trying to get together, we have to get them both signed. But I have one for Judge Patrick, and I'm going to read it. I have three total. That's okay?
Okay.
The Honorable Don Patrick is retiring as Vansack County Judge on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Drawn to have closed two decades of outstanding service to his fellow citizens. And whereas Mr. Patrick first entered public service on January first, two thousand and three, when he has sworn in as Justice of the Peace for Precinct One of Vansack County. And he went on to win reelection in two thousand and six and two thousand and ten. He was elected county judge in March twenty-fourteen and sworn in on August fourth to complete his predecessor's unexpired term. He began his first full term as county judge January one, twenty fifteen. Whereas over the course of his exemplary tenure, Judge Patrick worked to lower the tax rate while also controlling spending. And on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, he fulfilled his campaign promise to bring fiscal responsibility back to the county by overseeing the final payment of eight point seven million of debt. Whereas a lifelong resident of Vansack County, Mr. Patrick graduated from Grand Celine High School in nineteen seventy-nine. He worked for Morton Salt International for twenty-two years. And for four years, he was Vice President of Morton Salt Federal Credit Union. He also served as a union steward for the International Chemical Workers Union. And whereas in all his endeavors, Mr. Patrick benefits from the love and support of his wife, Ben Jean Dollar. I may not have said that, Dollar High. And he may indeed reflect with pride on his record of service as he embarks on the next exciting chapter in his life. Now therefore, be it resolved that Don Patrick be congratulated on his retirement as Vansack County Judge and that he be extended sincere best wishes for the future. Thank you, sir. And next I have Mr. West. Whereas Tim Parker West is retiring from Vansack County Commissioners Court on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, providing a fitting opportunity to recognize his outstanding record of achievement. And whereas Tim West was elected to the Commissioners Court in twenty fifteen, he has since served his fellow citizens with distinction as the representative for District Court. Over the course of his tenure, he has played an important role in helping Vansack County become debt-free. Whereas a veteran of the United States Air Force Reserve, Mr. West graduated high school in McKinney in nineteen fifty-nine and received a bachelor's degree in accounting from Southern Methodist University in nineteen sixty. He worked for the Texas Power and Light Company for five years and subsequently got a job in the construction industry. Over the succeeding, succeeding decades, he built numerous single-family homes and restaurants before retiring to Vansack County. And whereas in all his endeavors, Mr. West has enjoyed the love and support of his wife Carolyn, with whom he has shared nearly six decades. And he takes great pride in his three children, his eight grandchildren, his great-grandchild. And moreover, he is a valued member of Marvin United Methodist Church. And whereas through his dedicated leadership and commitment to, to good governance, Tim West has contributed immeasurably to the community. In so doing, he has earned the lasting respect and appreciation of area residents. Now therefore, be it resolved that Tim Parker West be commended for his service from Vansack County Commissioners Court and that he be extended sincere best wishes for the future. Whereas the Honorable Sandra Diane Thornton Plaster is retiring from the Vansack County Justice of the Peace for Precinct Two on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And whereas Judge Plaster began her tenure as Justice of the Peace in August twenty seventeen, when she was appointed to fulfill the unexpired term of the previous judge. And in twenty eighteen, she was elected to a four-year term. Throughout her time in office, she was, she was, she has performed her duties with distinction, earning the respect and appreciation of the residents she serves. And whereas the daughter William and Betty Thornton, Judge Plaster has, is a nineteen seventy-seven graduate of Shepherd High School, where she was a member of the Pirate Band and the Beta Team. And she earned the Gold Star Award for her involvement in four-H activities. Whereas in all her endeavors, Judge Roland, Judge Plaster enjoyed the love and support of her husband Roland Sonny Plaster until his passing in twenty twenty-one. They raised two children, Benjamin, I'm sorry, Benjamin Plaster and the late Heather Marie Plaster. Such a story. And the family also includes three grandchildren, Dylan, Leanna, and Chloe. And whereas Sandra Plaster has greatly benefited, benefited her fellow citizens for her dedicated service as Justice of the Peace. And she may indeed reflect with pride on the myriad contributions. Now therefore, be it resolved that Sandra Diane Thornton Plaster be congratulated on her retirement as the Vansack County Justice of the Peace for Precinct Two and that she be extended sincere best wishes for the future. And like I say, these will be both signed by Senator Hall and myself. And thank you.
Is there any other announcements need to be made? Anyone have any? Being none, we'll move to item number six, public comments. Scott, did anyone mind Susan? Anybody sign up? No one signed up for public comments? Item number seven, discuss and consider reappointing, reappointing Bobby, Robert Bobby Colosino to the Andrew Center Board for another two-year term, November the first, twenty twenty-two through, what is it, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, in place six for Vansack County. He served on the board of the Andrews Center since two thousand and four. Bobby is with us today. He has, I've spoken with him, he's, Bobby, you want to say something? He's willing to serve again.
Yes, sir. I've read this one nine. I think it's about eighteen years.
Yeah.
It's been an honor. I know it fits the needs. That statewide, for the statewide, we're like forty-nine. Hopefully our legislature, if you guys noticed, is not going away. Throw whatever dates, we throw whatever it is. And maybe they'll look at increase in some of the services, because they have, they need that.
Yeah.
And that's all we're working on.
And as most of you know, Bobby's retired also at the end of this year. Has served over, was instrumental in getting that juvenile center to Vansack County. But he is willing to serve on the Andrews Center Board even after retirement until we figure, until we figure out what those wives have in place. You know, we can always say they're having a board meeting today in Tyler. And
We're wanting to go, but maybe other way.
So he is willing to serve a minute. I'd make a motion to appoint, reappoint Bobby Colosino to the Andrews Center Board for another two-year term. Second, got a second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion? For Bob. Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eight, discuss and consider disposal of surplus equipment at the Vansack County Sheriff's Office. General description of equipment is motorized items and trailers. Aaron, you want to address the court? Good morning.
Well, this is round two. And I'm here to seek your approval for us to dispose of the majority of what's left behind the sheriff's office and that being surplus items. I sent an email, a list of Ms. Caldwell last week. I think she disseminated it to you guys. So if y'all have any questions about anything, I'm happy to entertain those as best as I can.
What's the difference in the black and the blue? Some of it's in blue, some in black. Is it, are we just discussing the items that's in blue?
No, sir. Everything on this list are, these are all items that we're looking to get rid of. The items that are in blue have been claimed or have been ear-tagged for specific commissioners. And the email, I, I think I stated that, that while we're trying to get rid of all those items, Sheriff Carter has voiced that if anything can be of use to the county through y'all's precincts, that you're more than welcome to, to come and entertain, take some of those. And that's what the blue indicates. These are items that have been, that have been claimed by, by some of the commissioners. Items that are still in black are items that we're still getting rid of. They just haven't been channeled through the commissioners precincts yet. But they're still available.
Questions?
I wouldn't make comment to the, to all four precincts. These, the third blue item, which is a, it's a, it's a generator with lights on it. Mr. West and Mr. Melton. I know one time before I took office, we had with precinct three, lost a major bridge. It was on a dead-end road. And they were out there in the middle of the night making repairs of that bridge. But this, one of these, both of these generators want to be at precinct one and want to be at precinct three. Or the sheriff's office, if anything comes up and we have emergency nights and we need these things, they're, they're not just for precinct three. They're, I just think we ought to have to cover the county in emergency. And they're stuck outside at the sheriff's office and we can put them in our equipment shed and keep them out of the weather. That's why we did it.
And it's the same over my precincts. Well, we got two options to get them, we need them, they're available.
Any other questions or discussion? And has Cindy, has Cindy had a copy of that?
I've been corresponding with Ms. Nix, so.
Okay.
She's nodding, she's.
Okay, we're good. We're good. Okay. Any of them ensure? Okay. Okay. Okay, I think we're covered. Any other question? Discussion? Being none, all in favor of approving the list? Say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay.
I'll motion.
Okay. Second, I got a motion by Commissioner LaPrada, second by Commissioner Melton. All in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Susan. Don't let me walk off that cliff. Item number nine, discuss and consider contractor bid for repairs due to weather damage.
Water damage.
Water damage.
Judge, we finally got, we've been struggling to get bids on these buildings from the Judge Martin's courtroom upstairs, from the roof leaking and from the lean-stanex, from the flood that we had out there. We finally have our bids back and I'm going to try to, if it's okay. Mr. Reese, he's our building maintenance superintendent. And he's taking these bids and kind of cut them down for, they're all in your books. But he's cut them down and talked to some of them and has kind of taken the lead on that. So maybe if you want to give a, what you come up with.
Well, for the District Court Room, we have two bidders. And they have different criteria or different things that they're bidding on, so that it's very difficult to compare the cost. Because cavalry, cavalry construction bid included, their bid includes replacing the flooring in there, all the flooring, whereas the cotton did not propose that at all. And it didn't have anything. And my belief is that it's, it's not going to be up to Commissioners Court to decide, but rather the insurance company on which, is this correct?
Yes, right.
Okay.
While you're going down, I'm going to address it. I've already talked to the adjuster. And he said when he was in there taking pictures, we had plastic and everything in place. And so he does not have an issue with replacing the floor. So the only thing we would need to do is recontact cotton, get them to submit the flooring bid. Or we don't have, or we can just go with cavalry. But the, the adjuster said that he didn't have no problem. They said the floor was damaged. And I would say I could not be actually, with the water that we had in there.
And although you aren't aware, I guess you've seen it, though, that there is asbestos abatement involved in this process. And it is the glue that holds the tiles to the ceiling that they have to do. So we're going to have to have a monitoring system, monitor air quality partition it all off, do half of the courtroom first and then move all the benches all back and then do the other half. So, and I was, the bid from cotton was not specific on the cost of that. They, they left a lot of openings in that regard. Additional charges that could be handled on that. And I talked with both of them about the plaster, because neither one of them talked about repairing or placing plaster that's come down. All they talked about is taking the ceiling, the tiles off and then putting new ones back up. And both of them pretty much said that they'll have to wait and see what the roof looks like, ceiling looks like, once they've gotten the tiles off. And then they'll come back and work it out with the insurance company as far as any having to replace any plaster in that regard. So those, those are the two bids. Cotton also proposed, it gives two proposals. One was to actually put a drop ceiling in, the two-foot tiles, rather than replacing the one-foot tiles on there. I don't believe we want to do that. It's not an option because of the historical.
When they end on, on the flooring, you're going to have to get approval through the Texas Historical Commission before you do that. They're going to have to approve what you do. Just like we had to do on the roof. Well, I was on, I was under, if that's the case, we've got to get it on ceiling, Mr. West. I've always been told, if you replace it back like it is, you don't have to.
Well, that's bringing that into say the same, because I think we will, but the flooring, we're not going to replace with the same stuff.
Why would we?
You're not going to find it.
That's not, that's a special, it's just a ceramic, not ceramic. I think when they remodeled it, ninety-four, I believe, that's when they put the ceiling up. But I'm sure they'll say okay.
I don't think they will have any problem with it, but you still got to go through the process. But we, we've signed off, the county signed off on that year ago, that any thing we do here has to be approved through them.
Okay. So we'll, we'll work on that. And then on the East NX, we have three bids in to do the work. Two of them are from the same, same companies that are doing the bids for the District Court Room. And then a third one from Gilant Restoration Management. So it's a cavalry construction restoration, cotton global disaster solutions, and Gilant Restoration Management. And they vary on some of the items that they're going to review, be replacing. And I've talked to them about it. They have different viewpoints on what, what needs to be done. It's going to be up to the insurance adjuster to decide which one of these they want to use and how much of repairs they want to do for the gift. Mainly, the main thing is that the cabinets, the desk cabinets attack office that need to be done. That's one, one company bid twelve thousand dollars just to replace a cabinet. And he went into detail about how expensive it is to get cabinets made these days and the lead time involved in this. So then, and the other company did not did not think it was a problem. So I'll leave it to the insurance adjuster because he knows what's best, I would say, in that regard. So that's, that's where we're at. We're just really waiting for the insurance adjuster. And I guess now to decide on the floor, flooring options for the district program and get with the historical commission and invest on that. Any questions?
I would, I would like to have court approval to move ahead with, y'all have these. The court is good with the three contractors we have. I'll work it out with the adjuster to see what he wants to do so we can get going. We finally got these bids. We need to, need to roll now. And, and my suggestion, especially on the East NX, is if the adjuster is good with it, whichever one can say they can get it finished quick. And we'll go from there.
Yeah, so wrong said two weeks to do the East NX.
I've, I've talked to two of them. Both of them said they could start within three days of being awarded the bid. And both of them said they could be through within two weeks after the start. So cavalry, I have not asked. So, but I did talk to the adjuster about the big, there is. There is parts of that, of that big work console that are damaged. And he's good with, with replacing those. Uh, the big cabinet that's fixed, that they'd say twelve thousand dollars. Uh, him and I were in agreement that he didn't think that was damaged. Uh, so, we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to find out. And two, two out of the three companies didn't thank that part of them. One company did somebody. So, anyway, I just need court approval to move forward and, and go with whoever the adjuster says though.
I'll make that motion. Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Melton. Second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any other question or discussion? Yeah, I wouldn't wanna go forward without the adjusters.
That's right.
On board. But that's the first time I've heard about the floor.
Is there any issue with the floors out there, is that it underwater too?
I mean, one, once we get the, I think, once we get the, the ceiling. The tile back, I mean, you, it, it, it would be functional. Uh, I mean, the, the floorwork and the tile could be done. You know. You could work any of that and lay the paper.
That's great. That's great. And, uh, and with floors in these, that's a concrete.
Yeah.
So. But I did, I have talked to him about the floors, and he said, I have hit me in the court, in Judge Martin's courtroom. And he said, I have no problem with that, because it was, I did not look at the floor, because it all covered up. Now, we also have. Water damage in the basement, but we have already received an insurance claim. And have been paid to replace those floors in the basement for the insurance. And a previous court elected not to do it, but we got our money. Well, the insurance has paid, so they're not gonna pay us again. And, and we can. We, we didn't, we didn't replace the floors, because we didn't, we didn't have the money to make her to do it, when, when we didn't replace it. So, at, at some time when we, the county has the money, we can move forward in the basement.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carries.
I'll move forward, thank you.
Item number ten, discuss and consider creating additional IT person, position. Is that gonna be you, Scott, or you?
I was wondering if some of this should be reserved for a close session. Or we're gonna be going into salaries and stuff like that. I didn't, I don't know.
Salaries. I didn't think that was gonna be on the agenda, salaries.
Well, you can't create an IT position without figuring out what you're gonna pay it.
Well, you should have paid it on your, your account.
The reason it's on here, gentlemen, today, so know we have a P twenty-five radio project. And it's moving into this deal out stage. And I don't know if y'all noticed or not, but I've had Scott very busy the last month of getting dispatch going. I've had him pretty well tied up between his training toward the radio system. And working on getting a new dispatch center put together, I, I've kept him very busy. He's gonna have a little low in that between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and then come January, we'll start into the meat of the radio project itself with, uh. Design review meetings, trainings, and such as that moving forward. So, I think a lot of his time up and what he's currently doing with his normal operations. Also, from everything I've researched and discussed, we're talking to other. Counties that put in P twenty-five systems like this, and talk with their IT people. They're saying, well, we're at the process by January, you're gonna need someone that can dedicate. To that radio project pretty regularly. And so by then, he's gonna be pretty much snowed underwear, that's most of what he does. And he'll stay that way until we get the project built out and cut over. Once we cut over, it'll become more of a major monitor watching. Now, in doing that. We can save approximately fifty to sixty thousand dollars on a recurring cost of the radio project. Because of things that he can do versus having to pay Harris to do one of the basic. Basic system administration, the basic program uploads, and such as that. We'll be able to rent house, we'll be able to take care of ourselves, be familiar with what's happening. And we can do that and save paying Harris to do it, and that will offset the cost of creating a new position.
I'm not sure everybody on the court understands the full scope of what we're taking on. And, and is this actually, has the court put radios under IT yet? Have y'all decided that if we? Has radios been put under IT? Are we gonna be taking this on genuinely?
And the radio project, that's one thing about these new radio systems, it's not like the old days. When I first started firefighting, we had a radio set there on the cabinet. When it would mess up, you'd unscrew this little bulb, I'd back screw a new one in, it would work again. Well, these new ones, they're computers that talk over the airwaves. They're, they're not the old fashioned radios or just transistors and receivers. This is a basically a computer program. That runs the whole thing, and the actual radio project part, part of component is smart. And that's where you wind up with it being a hugely IT project.
Each rack there, there's about a dozen servers. Including virtual ones. And there's two of those racks. There's routers and switches and stuff all in, and it's multiple networks. There's a lot to it.
It's not like we're trying to turn that into radio techs. Now, this is a computer component that we need IP to do computers out of.
I remember talking about this, I thought we were gonna discuss this when, when the P twenty-four system got up and operating.
Well, you're right, we did discuss it during the budget. And we discussed, we did need to hire one in October. But somewhere along the way in building this system, we would have to hire. And that's what I come back to y'all with in the research and study I've done, especially while I was in Oklahoma City, was I would talk to a variety of county and city representatives and IT people. And looking at where we're at now. We're gonna need an IT person by January to be working with this radio project as it's building and growing.
I've been asking for a third person to do PC support for a couple of years, maybe three years in budget. Because we've been growing, we've taken on, uh, a lot of things that we used to not have taken. And now we're about to take on a much larger scale. I don't know that that's been actually. Added to us yet.
We just talked about, it's not only the agenda to assign it to here, it's only agenda to. Uh, discuss and consider hiring a additional IT person.
That's what I think, there's a lot of parks that just probably need workshop or, or close session, there's, there's a lot of details.
But Scott's been invaluable in this process, and I've been able to bring him in there, we're. Going through every new processes and their training processes and installation processes, and them understanding that computer component of it. Before they work with everything.
It's gonna add on all responsibilities.
Thank you, I think that we, we organize workshops. And, I mean, I think we need to make, uh, uh, I might motion and table this. And, and when we do bring it back, uh, after, after we go through workshops. Then, okay, what are we talking, what are we addressing? And identify. I think that's gonna take some time.
The full scope of the.
The full scope of it. And then we come back in executive session. To discuss the, the ins and outs, the salaries and everything, everything.
And what part of Harrison is gonna play in this?
Right.
What are they doing?
Well, they, they've needed me so far for just getting dispatch moved over, so. We haven't even talked about power locations and, and all the other stuff outside of the building, we've just been doing stuff in the building. And I've been spending about half my time over there.
Harris has an option of doing it all, or we don't touch none of it, and like I said, the price goes up annually for that feature versus you never handle it.
I think it's a, it's a big question, I mean, it's. You were looking buried at the numbers, that's something we can come back to the workshop and go over that.
I second that. Okay. So who, who do you need in the workshop?
Well, definitely Chad.
Probably so, yeah.
Harris got the numbers.
Andy needs to be a part of it. I think we could have a workshop sometime between now and the next commissioner meeting, and get it all on commissioner meeting with the executive session next time.
While we're staying within the, all the statutes, I mean, this is, it's actually a budgetary deal, we should have done it during budget time. And, so, we, we need to be very careful, we know we're gonna open up a door for, uh. Uh, any department in, in the middle of the year needs another employee. Is gonna come say, hey, I gotta have employees, you did it for IT. So we gotta be very careful here, these things. And it was discussed during budget time, but I was. Understood during budget time that we won't need this in twenty twenty-three, but you better get ready, we're gonna have to have it before the radio system comes in line.
Yeah, that was.
That was what I just said, up and running.
Yeah, I think that was our understanding, was that, hey. Once this thing gets up and running, this program type of year or so, we get up and running. Uh, then we're probably gonna need.
I've been told for six years, you can't just come up and change the budget, and that's an emergency. So, it, it is an emergency.
Well, there's, there's six weeks of dedicated training that has to go on before, and this is gonna start somewhere after January, it's gonna be next year, early next year. That I'm gonna be have, gonna, I'm gonna have to go through this. But it's, it's not something I can just do an hour at a time, it's, it's a full. Every day for three weeks. And then another one every day for three weeks. It may be in Virginia, we're working on it. Maybe it could be local, but.
When I went to Oklahoma City, I started finding out more stuff on the timeframe, changing where I anticipate.
And working. I think, I think that's what's going. I think that, my, our understanding was, I, well, I know mine was. Of just speaking for me, was, yes, we may need an, an extra IT person. I think Tonda had expressed, uh, wanting an IT person for the sheriff's office and for the DA's office. And I thought, okay, but it's not gonna be affected in this budget. Uh, when we were going through the budget process.
Is that chosen?
That's, that's what I remember. Okay, but you're saying. From what you've learned. Where the, the clock moved up.
Yes, sir, I was sure it would be closer to the end of this budget and moving the next one. What I'm being told, we, we really need to step it on up and start it in fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Okay, I made a motion to table. Uh, item number ten was a second. Virgil second, any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carries. Now, Scott, are you gonna be the one in, uh, the? Workshops of? Okay. Item number eleven, discuss and consider increasing the amount allotted in the Van Zek County, uh, Get Well Condolence policy from fifty dollars to a hundred. I think you put that on there, didn't you?
I did, uh, good. I put this in here because, uh, I, I admit I made a mistake here, uh, I thought that we did, that we had a hundred dollar. Policy and, and we don't, we have a fifty dollar policy, and we've had. Had two fire arrangements sent out to, uh, employees who've lost a loved one. And they were over fifty dollars. Uh, so I'm gonna recommend that we do change it to, uh, a hundred dollars, because you just can't. You can't nowadays, with, with everything changing, you can't send, uh, fire arrangements. For fifty bucks. You might get a pot plant with an unknown plant in it. But you, you can't, you know, you can't do anything, so.
And it's not taxpayer money, it's, it's money. That is money that's generated through the vending machines here, so what we're talking about is not taxpayers, it's dollars, it's, it's.
It's not, it's vending machine money. So I make a motion that we change that policy and make it a hundred dollars.
Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion?
I was, I was talking about this the last day, like you said, money comes, money comes from all that. My understanding, we used to have a committee. That we, they were formed, I don't, I don't think a lot of the committees when we were gone. To kind of monitor this situation. My understanding is we have money in there, it's just that the limit was fifty bucks. And we had two issues like they did, it was over fifty dollars. So that's why I put it on there, but do we need to? Form a little committee to monitor this, or do we not, or?
Well, we can.
I, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Because I know it come up, because Sandy's our auditor, and this will happen one fire for her dad. And, you know, she felt, I don't speak for her, she felt strange, disapproving, because it, it was over fifty bucks. And it was for her dad, so she wanted to pay him for it, and I said, that's not right, I don't think you should have to pay for your own flower. We had Irma, it was the same way, it was over fifty dollars. Those are things we need to. Spend a hundred dollars on a quarter, in my opinion, so I didn't know. So we got the, the amount, right, like, that's the main thing, but like, like I said, we do have some money in there, and. Do we need it to be, he's like, I don't know, I could bring it up, somebody said it used to be, I didn't know nothing about it, this was a few days ago, do we need? Four or five people to monitor it and bring it up? Or not, it is gold. I, I, I don't know, I, I said, I'm just trying to, I don't think it's right, same, you got to pay for your own flower, you know, that, that. No, she, that, this is, I should have had, so. I don't know, do we need to? Replay her, or what? She couldn't, she went ahead and paid for the bill, because. The limit was fifty bucks, you know. So I don't know what y'all think about that.
Yeah, we need to face Angie.
That's what I think, the difference. So anyway, I'll shut up. I didn't know nothing about all this, it's not a big issue.
It's not only agenda to create a committee. It's, it's just. I mean, I think the. If you don't form a committee, then I think y'all secretary. Our mom, whoever.
Christie and Keegan, you know, because, you know, people contact them.
They do.
That, we'll do it, we'll just put it on there and then we can decide.
And I'm sure there's a big salary increase comes with it.
Can we, can they amend their motion to, to that, to, goes backwards to cover these two events? That we were short of.
Yeah. Absolutely.
So, your motion is to increase it from fifty to a hundred and go back and cover the two. That.
The two, uh, that was over.
Yeah, is that your motion? Okay, that's your second, okay. Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carries. Item number twelve, discuss and consider changing Van Zek County holiday time policy. Hey Chad, you wanted, you do have that on there?
Yes, sir, I'll let, uh, Jessica just move it out.
Okay.
Morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner Pratt spoke with me, uh, a little over a week ago concerning our holiday policy. His outlook, after he got with me and we reviewed the policy together, is. To change the policy to allow everyone to get their holiday pay every time we have a holiday versus. Equalling it out to a basic forty hour work week, except for law enforcement, because they fall under a totally different, different category, they're two oh seven K, so. They get paid out because they, they're different, so we don't want to change that at all, but we basically want the same thing for all the other employees. What we have now is, say, someone has an, they work and they wind up only needing seven hours of their holiday. What we have now is say someone has an, they work and they wind up only needing seven hours of their holiday pay. To equal them to their forty hour registered work week. That we put the difference into a bank for them so they can use it at a later date. The policy states thirty days. We have a lot of employees that don't. Don't go back and use it. So it just kind of builds up. That's something that they don't get upon termination because it's not any type of accrual benefit. So to, to change it would mean that they would always be paid. If they weren't forty hours, they wind up getting forty-eight because they get eight hours holiday on top of what they worked. If they worked thirty-two, like a lot of offices that are closed. Then we all, you know, you level out and get your, your basic holiday. So the policy would have to be changed to change it to all eligible employees, including law enforcement. Personnel scheduled to work or called in to work on a holiday because the meetings, the needs of the county shall be paid their regular pay rate for hours worked. Plus the additional eight hours holiday. The reason we specify eight is because we don't break it down by eight hour days or ten hour days. If, if you're, you work a ten hour day, you still only get the eight hours holiday. And that we also would add in there. That if an eligible employee is unable to take the holiday off, they are paid the full eight hours. That's the main difference of, of the change. Is paying everybody the holiday pay instead of banking a difference just up to forty.
And then what brought us about was. We had a holiday on a Monday. Think of that, the holiday, the Friday holiday. I gotta work Monday through Thursday anyway. No one take off on Thursday in this situation. We worked over on two days that were not the holiday, but they was there at the same pay grade. And then when the pay stubs come out, I got a whole crew sitting there upset that they didn't get paid and wondering where it's at. That's why I went to research and we found out. That anytime you work over during the week that has a holiday in it, they push it into the holiday bank. My guys didn't even know they had it sometimes at my home.
That has been going on forever. And we fought that battle.
We talked about that last month.
Yes, man. Well, it comes to mind. I come and ask Kenny about it. Fairness been a real hardship on Kenny because every holiday, he gotta go through everybody's stuff and make that correction.
Correct. Basically, we're paying people for forty hours that week. If, for example, your, your people, obviously, holidays on a Monday. And Chad people, those guys worked that holiday, okay? Well, their tech, they'll get, they're gonna get paid forty hours. That eight hour holiday, they didn't get paid for them on this check. It still goes to their bank. They still have to use it some more time. And he was on the video standing that they were getting paid for the day they worked plus the holiday. But that's not the way.
You, you get paid for your holiday during that week. You get paid if you work.
If you work.
If you work.
No, you're gonna get paid for the hours, like you said.
Yeah.
Instead of forty-eight hours. That was kind of, I think the understanding he had, but they would get paid. They work plus the holiday, although they work it, they still get paid for.
Decided to go on Sunday. We were gonna work Saturday and come in and get ready for the selection.
Right.
But they figured out, hey, Sunday starts the new week. We need to hit the forty, so we all came in on Sunday.
Then their, their holiday time will go into their bank and they can take it a different day later. They don't lose it unless they leave.
Right.
They take their employment, then they, they don't get anything. Over, over what would be, you know, that they had used. Like if they look on their pay stub right now, generally, most of them will see a hundred and four hours because that's what we have left. Budgeted in for the rest of the year for the holidays that have been approved. You may have some that have a hundred and five point two, but we have some that have a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty that they haven't used over time. And maybe they didn't understand the policy, but it's in the employee handbook. Um, it's two B five, the holiday policy, so. But it does fall back on employee to understand it or to come and ask questions when they see it. They get their pay stub where they're allowed to see it, you know? I, I see it both directions on, on paying you the holiday and, and just being done with it because we say, hey, we, we have holiday pay. So I, I see doing it that way, but I also see the other side of it. And it's available, especially for those. That are somewhat newer, that may. Need that time later to take off for, for something else that they want. I mean, you don't lose it. Either way, you know, I think it's a good thing, but I, I definitely see the side. When I work with them, questions on do, do, why would this person offer? And we kind of investigate stuff together that. They spend an extra day and a half every time we have a holiday in the treasurer's office balancing. Time sheets that aren't done correctly from. The supervisors to start with and they have to go in and fix all of them every single time there's a holiday. So, you know, if we keep it the way it is, we really need to get everybody else on track to help monitor their employees and, and explain to them what's going on.
I like not once you say the reason we spend that time. To pull down to is, is the people that's approving timesheet from not doing. They're supposed to be, I do the same thing. I have related work to me. I look in there, see them every day work and if they need their whole eight hours holiday. If they don't, I give what they need to, you know, and to thank the rest, but. That is my response. Who is approving timesheet? You're not supposed to check it approved. Yeah, he worked. He can see. I know he worked that day or I know he was off that day. You need to look at each day. You need to see. Monitor it, you know, like did they work that day? Did they need that holiday? Did they not? But they don't, nobody does that. They just say, yeah, prove it. Like I was here and he worked or whatever. But they don't look at the day by day. They don't look to see what it took to get to forty.
That's, it's a nightmare. I mean, it is. I thought with it every time.
But that's why it takes us so much time. I mean, at some point, you have, it has to be done right. So we have to look at everybody's timesheet because everybody don't pay attention to what they're supposed to. And I, I mean, I thought this about forever, like give up. Give in. People are not gonna do what they're supposed to. That's why it takes me an April, a day and a half to look at every timesheet and make sure they are right. People, like last time I had a guy ask for. Fourteen hours for comp time that he didn't have, but he got approved. And if I hadn't caught that, we paid him an extra fourteen hours for something he did not have. Because that person that's approved of the timesheet is not paying attention to what they're supposed to be. And I'll stop there and you know, that's just the one red. It's not gonna change.
You're right.
And, and Jill, I want to adjust a minute. They're on a holiday because they didn't work the holiday. The time they worked over were on other days during the week. They didn't actually work on the holiday. And so I want to adjust it out either. I try to keep it close to town on the timesheets. But that's one of the problems I'm looking at. We're not office personnel, you know? Nobody's gonna call nine one one at midnight on Saturday night and say, we need auditors in there to check numbers. But they're gonna call and say, the bridge washed out, the tree down, and then we ain't gonna get up and go to work. They don't have an option on that. And right now, it's kind of like you heard the suit would just say, well, we intentionally moved them Sunday instead of Saturday to avoid the holiday. My guys start doing that, we got problems. They start not answering that problem. And it, it's a little different now than in the past. When we went to the forty hour comp time max, we all set overtime budgets. So we have money there in our books to cover that. It's not like it was before where we were gonna find a way to cover it.
You, you're being paid for something that you've already been paid for. I mean, that, that holiday is, is paid for. And you work a holiday, you're, you're getting paid double pay.
That's what it comes down to.
You can't get double pay on a benefit that's already given to you. I don't know. What are you saying to you? No? Then I'll say it. Yeah, that's right. Budget was designed for a forty hour work week. If you go to this and change this, then our budget is not going to reflect. Which of what you're gonna have is you're gonna have, they're gonna be working and holiday pay. And we didn't budget that way. We budgeted a forty hour work week.
It's not like you're losing. If you have to work a holiday, you get a holiday in the next week. Or whatever. If you work four hours.
It says within thirty days.
It does say within thirty days.
You gotta take it. I mean. Whoever your supervisor, I make my guys take it. Are they gonna lose it?
Well, I think it comes back to what Kenny said. Like, I mean, you can look at my Kenny everywhere. I've got three of them. They had eighty hours. But I'm gonna look at it every, every. Every time I'm gonna look at it and I'm going to adjust it. If they're over, you tell Sandy, I mean, Christie, uh, if she's over. Then I'm gonna cut the holiday pay. I'm gonna cut it down to six hours, whatever minutes. To get it up to, to get it right, to get it to forty hours. That's correct.
Now, that's not currently tracked unless you know how many holidays are left moving forward that do the math yourself. You don't know how many are available as extra holiday. Are you guys a total? So unless you know.
I think the numbers are different from the net data system you're using than what they.
No, that report comes straight from that data.
Uh, what I said now, if I check stuff and then every department. It's a little report, our record, everybody gets it.
Upcoming holidays and extra hours. And, you know, it kind of stands out to me. We probably ain't been letting them take those holidays off. We've been tracking them over. Especially since Kenny's having the big credit for everybody. I tell the supervisor they've been tracking. They need to get busy. So we've, we've got times backed up. And like I said, when we went to the forty hour comp time max. We all created an overtime budget. We knew we'd need. And so that far, if they, you know, I think I could go work every holiday. We should be able to accomplish.
But they'll start, I mean, i- i- if you set that policy. They're gonna work it to their convenience. So if the courthouse is closed and you've got an employee sitting here in the office issue, the courthouse is closed, the office is closed. But I really need that day. Next week rather, or two weeks from now, rather than this week, could, they're gonna go to the supervisor. Would you mind if I went ahead and worked that holiday? And then that way I can take it down here. You know what's gonna happen?
If you go to.
Can one. I think you, 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 you opening up the whole. I think it just needs to be monitored. And I think Kenny would sit there and say some of the messers is the. The problem.
This name is a lot of people that don't do.
I've seen it in eleven months. Working on thirteen.
So there we're good. So let me ask, is there a, is there a motion to. Amend the holiday. The holiday time policy? Got a motion by. Commissioner La Prad, is there a second? The, uh, we got a motion by Commissioner La Prad. I'll call for a second.
I'll second and I'll make his vote.
Got a second by Commissioner Pearson. Any other questions or discussion? I would say to throw you budget out, it's gonna throw the budget off this. Cause we didn't budget that way.
And we throw something in there.
There you go.
Mr. La Prad is correct. We, the road bridge can handle. No other department is gonna be able to adjust their budget. It's already set. We can, with Roland Bridge can take it from our contingency and, and put a lie item up there as Danny, put a lie item for holidays. And, and it, it is an issue on the. Two percent that work fourteen. It, it, it does become an issue and it does become a very big issue trying to get that in in thirty days. But. I get mine in. We, we watch ours and we take care, we make sure, I make sure all my employees get their holiday. If they, if they're taking off a day and they say, I've got to be off today. I go and calculate how many holiday hours is left the rest of the year and know how many extra they have. Okay, we're gonna pull you down to what you're supposed to be. We're gonna use that on your holiday instead of using a comp time for the vacation. So, uh, I, I'm. But be- because it's gonna affect, and I didn't think about this for a second, and because it's gonna affect everybody that's not rolling bridge, their budget. I'm gonna rescind my second, uh, because there's no, there's no need for. Uh, until we get it worked out. So another deal, we've got to work out at budget time. I'm gonna rescind my second. Let's work it out at budget time.
Okay, we still have a motion. Is there a second? Uh, for lack of second.
There's something I can work with just any on. We get an eight point two for how much paid age or holiday hours left. So, you know, get it to four. You can say like there's hundred and four and you can say it's like a hundred and sixteen.
Okay. Okay. Okay, no action. On item number twelve. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget amendments. Oppose, same sign. Motion carry. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget amendments.
So my appearance.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government approval entry of same. In the court's minutes as matter of record. Mr. West, you have a comment?
I do.
Okay.
Last month, we had two that did not get in. Uh, they, they have gotten in since. And, uh, but for the current month, we, so far, we only have nine of the nineteen that are in. But we have another meeting, so I think we'll be okay.
Okay.